Okay, can everybody stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see here, let's hope the meeting ends exactly seven or six thirty. My hand, Barbara. Another chair? Oh. You got the best one. pencil?
Helsa.
Helsa.
She's right next to me.
Hey, you wanna know something? Just get in here. Okay, ah, let's go ahead and do a roll call. Mr. Riley?
Yo.
Ah, Ms. Garber? Randazzo? Egrin, here. Zambow?
Here.
Helsa? Sitting right next to you. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Wurum?
Here.
And Bart Dunsmore is not here today.
Bart Dunsmore, I think there's a rule in there someplace about if you miss more than three meetings, you're done. I mean, this is crazy, he never shows up. So, we need to do something. That this, something needs to happen. He should be here, he should have been here at that meeting last night. I'm just expressing my opinion.
No, good.
But maybe you find somebody else in the DPW or do something because...
I spoke to him today, I didn't talk about the meeting tonight, I never thought about that, but I did speak to him today.
Well, he hasn't been here in, what, in Europe, maybe?
I don't know.
Something like that.
Check the roll call.
Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, no, I was doing it.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the absence of Mr. Dunsmore?
Motion.
All right, and who seconds? All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Game there. Wanna do that again?
I oppose it.
Yay.
You oppose the absence?
If you don't call in, if you don't call in, your absence should not be excused.
Shouldn't have been excused, that's why.
Okay.
We're saying we're not excusing his absence at this meeting.
I'm not gonna excuse an absence of somebody who didn't bother at all.
Show up and he gets the paper.
I mean, I think he quit. Well, I remember that one day, he walked out and he said, "I'm done." So, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
March me on the, I'll discuss it.
So, who voted no? One? We have more than one no vote? Are you and Bart?
What's that?
You and, you gotta record who voted no.
Yeah, I vote three, I vote, no, three.
Oh, my damn, oh my, I thought there were two, and so...
All right. Can we move on? Move on. All right, adoption or amendment of agenda? I think you had something, Mr. Weaver.
I wanted to add under new business, I'd like to discuss the final review process for Phase 1 of Memphis metal condo project. It won't take very long, but it's something that we got coming up, and I'd like to try to be a little more proactive and make sure that we're all understanding what our responsibilities are. Because that really could start any day now, we're gonna have three or four balls in there, so I just wipe through your radar.
All right.
I actually have, um, I'll be adding the minutes for May 14th.
You wanna add the minutes to May 14th in new business? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, any other ad, any other amendments to the agenda?
Um, you know, actually, while we're at it, um, just an update on the, um, preliminary plan review.
Okay. You good, Zambow?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm just trying to write here. All right, so we got the final review process of the condo product, or project that we wanna go over on new business. Minutes from the May 14th meeting?
Yeah, um...
And is it an update on the preliminary plan review?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else that need to be added in there? No, we go good with that then?
Uh, move your adoption as desired.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay, Tammy opposes.
Who was the second on there?
Um, I seconded.
Weaver was the, uh, I made the motion.
Weaver made the motion. We good?
Yep.
All right, everybody have a chance to look over the special meeting minutes.
There's a couple of grammatical corrections on that. Tina Manchuk, that's not how you spelled her last name.
It's not.
M-A-N-C-H-U-K?
No, C-Z. Thank you.
One more time?
No. C-Z.
M-A-N?
And her husband's name is Chris, not Chalk. Yes.
All right, spell your last name again, Tina.
M-A-N.
Uh-huh.
C-Z-U-K.
C-Z-U-K. Okay, now I got it. Okay, any other? And it looks like Bob Riddle, it's, I think his last name is spelled wrong also.
Trying to listen to that video and spell out names is so tough, so tough.
Right, so Riddle needs to be R-A-D-D-L-E. The parish is correct. Remember that from the last time?
Looked that up on Facebook.
I did, okay. I didn't see anything, I didn't see anything else on there?
Which person?
James. James.
James. This is information I have, so I don't have a chance to put it back, so this, what will we discuss?
Okay, so we good with the minutes? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections? Anybody?
I'll, I'll make the motion on there.
All right, how about a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, motion passes on that one. All right, moving on to the stars of the show. Citizens' comments regarding agenda and non-agenda items. First one we have is Tina. Hannah Chuck.
I'd like to go last, my belly's hurting.
You wanna go last?
Yeah, so I don't have to repeat a lot of things off while I had surgery a lot of days ago, so...
Okay. Okay, we'll go to Mr. Riddle.
Bob Riddle, I live on 3, 4, 5, 51 Pratt, corner of Bell River and Pratt. Been coming to meetings for some time now, just seeing if there's any progress on the flooding of my property, my barn, sensitive construction started next door to me, or to the old area there. I haven't seen anything gone, done yet, hoping today I can find something or hear something that's gonna finally get done, or start to get done.
I have good news. Uh, they're coming to our house Friday to talk about options. I was gonna text you that earlier, but I was driving.
Okay, but today I'm here, again, just hopefully to find out some answers and see that something's gonna be done soon before fall, or the next, you know, potential big rain. Uh, there was a, not a big rain late, but too long ago, but still standing water next to my barn. Uh, it did dissipate for a day or two, so I'm here to hopefully find out some answers today.
I can't write today, I swear. I think you go good, I'll look in the back there. See what's going on with that. You said you, you're over in that area?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm the neighbor.
And, okay, you're the neighbor, okay. You said the builders are coming over?
Um, and I believe Bart?
Bart?
Yeah, they were gonna try Monday, but we weren't home, so they're coming Friday.
This Friday?
Yes, this Friday. To discuss some options.
So, with the builders and with Bart, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I get that down there. Awesome, once you find the information, let me know and we'll let the rest of the board know. That'd be perfect, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Mr. Riddle, appreciate it. Mr. Fields, who's your spotlight?
Field, deal, 263 Bell River. Uh, just gonna expand on what Bob said, um, going back to the flooding and drainage issues. At the last special meeting, uh, again, John Edie got up and stated that up until seven minutes ago, they weren't aware of this problem. It was documented in July of '24. In August of '24, members from the city reached out to the builder. Emails with pictures and videos were sent to the builder himself from the I-Admont with Mark on site through September. Uh, the attorney attended a meeting in here with the city's attorney, and these drainage issues were brought to his attention then. Uh, in response to Tom Edie's letter to them in April, uh, John Edie also replied back, uh, recognizing these drainage issues. Yet again, in a special meeting, he stands up here with Mike and Mark and says up to seven minutes ago, they weren't aware of this. Um, again, as pointed out, the last time Mr. Edie came before any of you, he's just allowed a free rein to misrepresent facts when it's black and white and it's on your record. Again, I keep referring back to you guys. History's recorded, it's recorded on video, there's meeting minutes, there's agendas, there's motions, there's votes, it's all history. You know, somebody coming in here and just making statements when they're part of the history and saying the exact opposite with recorded history is, that needs to be addressed, and yet it still continues. Um, as far as the preliminary plan being added to the agenda, uh, Joseph's gonna address that, and they will be addressing that before, before me, when this is done. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jim. All right, Joseph, is it Brennan?
Correct. Just have a brief prepared statement, um, no questions, just wanna announce what our intentions are. So, you know, my name is Joseph Brennan, attorney with the law firm, Dolby Tomich in Detroit. Um, our law firm was retained by Mr. Fields in connection with his opposition Phase 2 of the state-wide absence plan, whole family. Kind of maybe to, um, you know, I'm sure you're all a little aware, Mr. Fields has a, um, how home is located on Bell River Road, uh, that's part of the initial set of that development, and as such, he has a substantial interest in ensuring that this development is proceeding according to proper procedure. Um, as you probably are well aware, this project is subject to, if you have trouble hearing...
Yeah, it's getting a little bit...
Um, this project is subject to the Michigan condominium act, uh, and, as well as your own city code, uh, as well as the open meetings act. So, our law firm will be taking everything that's transpired so far, reviewing, uh, the minutes that have occurred at these meetings, just to try to determine whether this body in the city has been operating in accordance with the Michigan condominium act, uh, of city code and the open meetings act. Um, you know, this, this should not be construed as a threat of litigation, um, related to just trying to review and, uh, everything that's taken place so far to determine whether it has been in accordance with proper procedure. Um, and again, not, not, not a threat of litigation. Um, but, uh, you know, at this time, you know, if you want to reach out to me, if you have any questions privately, hopefully you do so. Uh, Mr. Fields, you provide us a lot of information and, uh, maybe you're doing that before, so... That's, that's all I have.
Appreciate the heads up, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. Okay, Tina, you're up.
So, I'm gonna piggyback off the lawyer. Phase 1 is a detention pond is needed, it's an absolute. It's not the only lawyer that says that, it will not be the last lawyer that says that. That's not, it's not like a litigation threat. It's just, I myself am a nurse, but I'm also a legal nurse expert witness with multiple firms across the state of Michigan and in Iowa. Iowa doesn't matter, but I just wanted to know. In the state of Michigan, with the Michigan condominium, city act, a detention pond is needed. Our own ordinance says this. In our paperwork, it says that the start of Stage 1, there would be a, a part of it, and then it would be finished in Stage 2 in our own meeting minutes. Um, piggybacking off John Edie, I was just gonna say the same thing that he said. He's been told time and time again, and he stood here and he lied in front of everyone, and no one confronted him. He knows about it, there's letters. Even Mike Dill, straight from the horse's mouth, you know me, I call him, I don't care, said in 2021, he told Memphis, if it wasn't gonna work, he was gonna back out and not waste anybody's time or money. It's in your records, 2021. But I, I, you guys have backed yourself into a corner with him. Though I believe there were a lot of promises, and I'm not blaming anybody that sits here because most of you are new. But there were many things that were promised to him, you, yourself, and I'm not pointing you out. We, this was a dead horse. The dead horse is alive. And gallery. Um, I'm also not gonna be bullied anymore. I, um, had a, Tim Zimmer, the other night in the DPW meeting, he told me that I bullied a previous commission member. A plan, a, a city council member calling me names on the record is wrong. It was then put in the meeting minutes that I want them amended, and I want a public apology for being told that I insulted Donna when all I did was ask her to do her job. She said, "I didn't send the email," and I said, "No, you didn't." She then confronted my husband, "I really sent it, I don't have." And then said, "I sent it to the wrong email." So, I sent her another email to this email that she replied. Come on, huh? Um, speaking on that, um, and I'm just gonna speak as a whole here. We feel that we're being bullied and being pushed back on, called names, you know, told we're gonna do bad things for the city, it's on the record, we watched it, we're not for Memphis. We're for Memphis, but we're also for ourselves. I feel sorry for some of you, you walked into a bad position, and many decisions were made long before you stepped on board. But you know that, we all know that, many before all of you did. So, you're stuck in a bad position. We want you to acknowledge our hurt from that. We can't go back, but you need to understand that going forward, the negligence that happened before is lowering our property values, it's ruining and destroying our property. We matter. Now, do I have a foot in the game about the flooding right now? Nope, my water fly, flies out, but the minute he starts building, I do worry. I do. So, we have to prevent this before it happens to me. I feel bad for this man. I feel really bad for him. Um, the police presence outside, it doesn't intimidate anybody. He actually laughed when we walked outside. He's laughing at you guys, why is the police here, it's ridiculous. None of us have ever been threatening. That's an insult to us as humans, that we would become violent. Not any of us have ever showed a violent tendency here. That is a formal bullying.
Could you elaborate a little bit on that again? I'm not really aware of that.
There was a police officer, was there not, sitting outside, and he...
Our last meeting?
Last meeting or the meeting before, I'm a little confused about the two meetings 'cause I had surgery, so I may have missed the meeting.
All right, whatever, whatever meeting.
But Dave was sitting outside and laughing about it. Why, he needed to...
Laughing about it?
Yeah, why?
How would you know that if you were in here?
Because when we went outside, we talked to him.
Okay.
We had an open conversation about it. He was called, was told to be here in case of problems. There's no problems here. Have any of us ever threatened you in any manner? That's insulting. I'm a professional adult.
Wait, wait, that, that, this is not the first time that that has happened.
Thank you.
We have to protect ourselves.
I, I agree with you.
And, and we don't know sometimes what's gonna happen at these meetings.
Okay.
I've been here way longer than you have.
I agree.
And I've seen some violent outbursts, so it doesn't...
And he harmed nobody by being out there.
No, you're correct.
He harmed no one.
I agree, but so, anybody that was in this room, we're all professionals. That, I know.
I mean, there was a pretty ridiculous outburst at that last meeting that I was...
He was sitting over there, I understand, he was pretty mad, his stuff was...
Yeah, it just, some of the things that were said that was, um, inappropriate, not adult life. So, that could have gone real bad, real bad.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that is why we wanted to be close by.
It's just precautionary measures, we have a right to do that, we have a right to ask.
You absolutely do.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it at that?
Okay.
Okay? He's out there, he's out there, he's not out there, he's not out there, but...
He wasn't sitting in here.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, he wasn't.
Okay, so he was just sitting out there.
I assure you.
They didn't intimidate anyone.
All right, all right, all right, we're done, we're done. I don't wanna keep bantering on this, we're done. Move on, please.
I was, you're the one that went back to it, thanks.
But, that's it, we're done.
So, this is, I, I'm glad we could have a calm conversation, thank you, Bart. I understand that things have worked in the interim, they will, I...
If, if things can turn sour, if things can turn sour, would...
I appreciate the fact that, um, there are people now that are asking for things to run properly. I think they should run properly. I, you know, like, you asking someone not showing up for a meeting, trying to follow the open meeting act, things, that's great. I want to move forward, but I want the planning commission to look forward and wonder, and the ZBA, when we're passing things on, to be honest about what is really going on in the city. The flooding, the damage, the things that are going on. Um...
Is there a five-minute rule here?
Yes.
There is, there is.
She has one minute.
Yep. Just so it's aware too. And a lot of people here are mainly maybe not aware of it, but there are people that are within these meetings that actually sit at those tables right there that feel bullied too when they leave here. And sometimes they don't feel that they can even talk to their own counterparts.
I, I don't, I wouldn't, I've never felt that way. I've been in this thirty years, I've never felt bullied. I, I do, I say it all with my conscience, what's good for the city.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Tina. Moving on, communications. We have, uh, everybody received a letter from Mr. Weaver. Take a brief look at it, 'cause I like to, uh, add this in, um, to the record.
Later, I did not get it, is that right? Sorry.
The wood samples are in our path.
No, and that's...
It was too late. I wasn't able to head it off the path.
So, is there a copy that I...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I got another one here. Sorry, you weren't here when you were, when you passed around. Make copy, you know me, I make copies for everybody, Anna too. That was yours, though, right?
Yeah.
All right, I got the one five.
Yeah, thank you.
It's pretty dry stuff, it's just out of code book, just a simple discussion about being proactive about our responsibilities, the things we got coming up, 'cause we're gonna have a number of them, I see plenty more, so I just wanted to bring that up. Hopefully, for Paris, that we might act as the professionals we all should be.
All right, now for this example, I'll take it, I'll get it in the record. Okay, moving on, new business. Uh, let's go ahead and go with the, uh, final review process of condo product, project. Mr. Weaver, you take the ball on that one?
So, we all are aware, we got pretty much more phases to the, to the, uh, condo ordinance, conceptual, preliminary, which is what we're waiting through now, and then we have, uh, the last phase is construction review. And that really could have taken place, should have taken place by now, I think. But this is gonna be coming at us, you can, you can read in the code book under 150, uh, under the condominium thing towards the end there, of what that final review entails. And I would, I'm just hoping everybody would take a moment before we actually have this on our table, which could be any day, and see what we're, what we're called to do here. And stressing that, you know, the planning commission should be a counterbalance and a check on government as far as city council goes. That's the function I see us fulfilling here. That, you know, we're supposed to investigate these matters, pass on an informed decision, and many of the issues that you guys have been bringing up through the course of this final review will be reviewed. And so, I, I look at that as a positive, that, that might help us sort out the issues that we've had. And when I'm only talking about Phase 1 here, again, nothing to do with Phase 2, strictly Phase 1. And, uh, you can, you can see in there, I just highlighted a few of them, but basically, um, we know where, they're, they're processing their zoning issues now to the ZBA. I don't know what dates put, been put on the calendar for that, though. But before anything moves forward, that has to be done, so we've still got a few minutes to breathe here. But as soon as that's resolved, then, you know, we absolutely gotta start a final construction review plan, that's our duty. And, and that way, we can flush out all the mystery and questions and concerns that people have. Go on by the book, it's written down there. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty explicit. Um, and I did note in that, our own, our own ordinance, retention base and is required, you know, ordinance, so I, you know, absolutely understand your... And we got a review of the parameter, the green belt fences, screens, and we have to then rec, make a recommendation to the city council. So, let's make a, an informed recommendation. And also, this process calls for the planning commission, you know, we have the ability to bring an attorney in, to bring a planner in, to bring various, you know, we should have the DVW in here while we have these focused discussions on if we have any issues. And, uh, anybody else that's germane to the process, the, the, uh, the engineers, that's all, that's all called for. We don't have to go to school and learn all these trades. That's what we got people here to help us with. And hopefully, we can do it in expedited manner, 'cause this is absolutely dragged on too long for everybody involved. And, you know, there's other things we're gonna need to move on to. We're gonna have this Phase 2 issue coming up, number one, that's gonna be, I'm sure, a lot of back and forth with that still. Uh, so, we need to get this one done, and, uh, it's not on our, our agenda yet, but I, I, I just, as a prior planning commission chair, I always try to, what's coming up over the hill? And be prepared for it. I don't like being reactive, and in my experience, much, almost everything I've dealt with since I've been involved as a city person, it's been reactive. So, that's the reason I bring it up, and thank you, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for entertaining, few minutes to read it. After our education, you know, this stuff is in our code book, we're supposed to know that code book, or at least study out the parts that are necessary when it comes up.
All right. So, when you get in touch with, um, Bart then in regards to that retention pond and you get in touch with...
I did, as a matter of fact, today. Uh, that's what I called him about, in a roundabout way. Uh, I didn't know who was going to pass that suggestion on, or not suggestion, the motion that was passed, and city council had BMJ come out and shoot the monuments, and also to assess the drainage issue, uh, over there on Bell River. and also to assess the drainage issue, uh, over there on Bell River. I guess nobody had. I did text, all I had his number was for Phil. I don't know his last name, he's an engineer. I texted him right after the meeting, but I don't know if it went into text heaven or what, but I never got a call back. So I did ask Bart today if, I said, have you seen BNJ come out yet? Uh, no, he had not. And he said he's going to be calling. And I said, good, let me know when they're out here, 'cause I'd like to, you know-
Yeah, I wanna follow up on that.
Yeah, I'll definitely, anybody would like to, if you're able to come out on site and discuss or see what they're doing. It's pretty simple what, what they're gonna do, but I expect that that should be scheduled now. Now it's been another week that's passed. Um, in future, if I'd had this direct contact, I would have directed, you know, contacted them directly. Uh, you know, that's unfortunately an experience I've, I've had a lot here, is things just don't sequentially move along like they are and uh, sometimes just, you know, nobody's fault, just we don't have a good procedure, so I usually take it upon myself to notify people on my own, but that one fell through, but I followed up today on it. So I expect to be hearing back from Bart. It's in his court.
Okay.
And they should be out here to do those assessments that we discussed at the last City Council meeting.
Alright, when you find out, let me know.
Sure.
If it, uh, if anything, I mean, we can, I'm busy tomorrow, but you know.
I'll give you heads up one way or another, as soon as I hear.
Yeah, as soon as you find out, let's know, then we can-
I'll get back to them shortly, believe me.
Okay. Awesome, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Minutes for May fourteenth meeting, Ms. Randazzo.
Yeah, that's my bad. Um, so, uh, Mr. Zambro did send them to me and I did not see them come through my email. So I just found them and had sent them to Amber, so they are completed. Um, but I guess we'll wait until those are printed.
We'll have them printed and then just make sure that we go over them on the next meeting.
Okay.
So we can get them approved and get them into the, into the-
Take full responsibility for that one. That's my bad.
Alright, and then of course I see your update on the preliminary, preliminary plan review, but I think we went through all that already, correct?
Um, no, not necessarily.
Oh, no, wait, that's what, that's yours, Amber. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to give everybody an update that, um, the builder's attorney reached out, um, and had a couple of questions just regarding, um, a couple of the variances that are needed. I know right now that the, the variance application has not been submitted to ZBA yet. So, um, I anticipate that that's coming soon. Um, I'm, off the top of my head, I'm not aware of what the timeline is for ZBA, but, um, I, I just know that that's what they're working on right now. Uh, the questions that they had were just in regards to, um, some of the setbacks and just making sure that our interpretations were the same. Um,
What, what was the same, Amber?
The interpretations of the ordinance, like which, which ordinance we were basing our-
Reusing?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, oh, the building length. Um, they have changed, they were, 'cause, so originally it was the twenty-seven feet and they were gonna have to get the variance for the foot and a half or two feet. Um, they have, they have modified that to the hundred and twenty-five that would meet the ordinance. Um, so their question was, do they still need to request variance if it now fits the ordinance? No.
It was-
Yeah, but we should see that on a print.
The building length was fifteen inches longer than our ordinance.
Yes, and, yeah, and so they, they modified their plan to fit the ordinance. So no, they wouldn't need a variance.
I guess they wouldn't need a variance if, if they're complying with our ordinance.
But when they submit a set of plans, I wanna see that reflected in plans though.
Well, and that's, that's-
Because we have to re-review that, so I, it's wonderful. They say they're gonna do that, but it's very easy to say what you're gonna do and not do it.
Well, and the ordinance-
I just caution you.
The ordinance for the, uh, final plan is that, you know, it has to, what's the actual wording for it? Um, does it substantially fit what was approved at preliminary?
Substantially, that's the one that has a lot of meaning to it. There's a lot of other issues there that, that one might be a little bit of a stretch.
Let me find the exact wording for it. But either way, um, yes, we'll have a chance to make sure that it doesn't factor in. Um, that was the city attorney.
Actually, it's right here, Amber.
Yep, so substantially, yep. And I guess that we up to us, um, if I don't blame you.
Yeah, I guess, I guess there may be other things there that, that could be challenged, is that right? I mean, there, there are other issues besides just the height and setback.
Oh yeah, yeah, no, there was, there was-
I mean, just because they don't, they don't bring it up, I, I think some other things that, that need to be brought to the ZBA attention also. I mean, there's just some basic
Well, the list of-
differences on
The list of things.
with the master plan and so on.
No, what we said for what needs to be, what ZBA needs to look at is, is what we talked about, the setbacks, um, the height, the length, which now isn't, um, the on-street requirement.
Right, okay, yeah, there's those, yeah, those four things for sure.
Yeah, they know, they know what they need to-
Yeah, yeah.
They know. That was all locked up, the last meeting. Yeah, that was all taken care of in the last meeting.
Right.
And they haven't applied yet, or?
No, they're, they're still directing their application. They had, they just had a couple of questions because that, what is confusing is when you look at the Memphis ordinance where it says, okay, building height, whatever, and then we have our own like condominium project, so, you know, yes, although it does incorporate the original ordinance, the condo ordinance might say something like slightly different or something of that nature, so, um, I did have some
I think that language in our, in our book though is, it equates subdivision ordinances and condo orders will, they're still gonna have to, I might tell it where it comes down, right? But they have to follow the same rules, like it's, it's zone RM.
Yeah.
Just because it's a condo, they're still gonna have to follow the RM thing along with the roads and the height and all that.
Yes, yes.
So, I don't know where they're figuring that, how they interpret it, I mean, I-
I, I think the condominium project ordinance is actually more restrictive than just like a multifamily
Yeah.
unit, the RM. So that's, so yes, they need to follow that, but they also need to follow the condo project ordinance.
Yeah, a lot of details.
But-
Well, great, it's good to hear that we know where they're at though, and they still haven't filed an app, so that gives us another little bit of breathing room trying to be ready for that final review, which I'm happy to hear that.
I do anticipate that it is coming soon, um, but like I said off the top of my head, I don't know what ZBA's timeline is. I don't know, they have sixty days or whatever it is.
I like that when the, when the preliminary comes through, when they do, when they do the redraft, I like to have our engineers here.
Yeah.
We should have everybody here, wherever we do-
Well, and-
Okay, alright, once, once we-
Because that'll get built to them too, if my understanding is correct, you know, these,
Okay.
they have to pay for these fees. We're, we're not financing them
Right.
to, uh, re-review and, and to re-litigate or to look over stuff again. That's their responsibility, so let's not say budget is a problem for calling people in when we need them. That's what we retain these-
What about our other plan that we use? Can we bring her in also? We still have her-
Oh, absolutely.
I would like to bring her in also. These plans come through, I wanna go through these, go through the redesign with the plans.
Yeah, you know, we can invite them in, but the builders,
The builders, DVW.
if we think it's appropriate or meet privately, whatever, you know, whatever
Yeah.
people think is gonna be the most advantageous and to get things resolved.
Absolutely. That's where I wanna move on that. Alright, you good there, Amber?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. Review of the master plan, since, uh, Jimmy's new here. We gotta get her a copy then. I have one here. Um, I know we were looking, did we check with, uh, St. Clair in regards to other professional planners? I know we had one proposal.
Yeah, so I-
But we had to get three bids, so what's going on with that?
I actually have a phone call set tomorrow with, um, what is his name? He is the same gentleman that we took the class from. What is his name? Hold on. I'm losing my mind, guys. This is it. Ball is his last name.
Ball?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, well.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I have a phone call set with him tomorrow. And-
Tomorrow at twelve?
Yes. Um, just so he has an idea on where we're at with the master plan, um, I have, there's three more sections that need to be done.
Okay.
Um, and they're just, they're just like the weird sections that I don't, I haven't really seen a, um, somebody else's plan, like the ones like natural resources or something, and the other, I don't have a holdover for me, but, um, I've looked at other master plans and they don't have that same section, so I'm just trying to figure out exactly what is going to be included in there. Um, but I think we can get that done.
Okay.
Maybe if we take a rough draft to, you know,
To him?
Yeah, to somebody that can look at that and, and see what's gonna be corrected.
I, for the other parts, you know, we kinda add together and save a lot of stuffs. We can do that further ahead, if the schedule will do it.
Yeah, I talked to Doug Pratt, our fire chief, who's the Chair of Planning for Riley County. He said he went- I'm sorry?
He's pretty knowledgeable.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, he said they went through St. Clair, the St. Clair Planning.
Yep, yep.
So did you get a bid?
Uh, no, I didn't.
So we got just one being scared.
One right now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Doug's, I was talking with-
We got one from Karen, so we need at least two, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna talk with Doug when we're done with the meeting.
Yeah, I would say, get in contact with him.
And I'm gonna call, I'm gonna get in contact with St. Clair.
Yeah, 'cause he told me that too, and I was, I asked him for who his contact was and he never got back to me. Um, so if you can get-
Yeah, I have his number, so I can text him or whatever. But I'll, I'll walk next door when we're done with the meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, get the information, then I'll give them a call and-
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I'll send an email or give him a call or whatever works, but-
Okay, yeah, I'll get the contact info.
It's Jason Ball.
Jason Ball.
And I'd like Karen to be aware that we are in the process of still soliciting bids.
Okay.
She's already given us a complete bid, broken down, so, and that's one we do have complete.
Okay, alright, we'll get in touch with Jason Ball and then I'll check with Doug Pratt. And, uh, get his, uh, people, he, 'cause they, theirs professionally done. He says it didn't, you know, the cost wasn't that much, so.
Again, I would like to do as much work on it as I possibly can.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So before we, yeah, before we entertain having somebody, but-
Okay, so what has been done on it? Since you, you, you got it?
So, I haven't touched the master plan, or, yeah, I haven't touched it that much. The, what I really have been doing is trying to review others to figure out what needs to go in this, in the last three sections that we have. So, that's my next goal, is to get something put into all three of those sections. Let me pull it up.
That's what, Section Six.
Yeah, hold on, let me look at it.
Because what we've been saying for months is that just because it was in the last one doesn't mean we have to have
Right.
those sections.
Right, and well, I think these have actually been added from our last one. So that's why I've been trying to keep them, is because it seems that there was an interest to have them. I don't wanna just start cutting things out, but I also don't know how natural resources is extremely helpful to Memphis, Michigan.
Correct.
Um, I mean that so lovingly, but hold on, let me.
Check it for her.
We have a lot of maps, and, and that's gonna be my biggest problem, is, is getting, is putting the maps in. I'm just not, like, technologically
No, I tried doing something with it and I totally messed it up.
Right.
I disbelieved it.
I wish I could, but, okay, so, yeah, so Section Six is natural features. The soil, pre-settlement, vegetation, uh, woodlands, wetlands, surface water, groundwater, fish and wildlife resources, natural features inventory. So it's like-
I'll write that up.
Katie, because I literally have no idea. I don't know what to do for fishing or anything.
Well, I mean, in the context of that, I, I could do an ecological breakdown of one square mile, and that's not perfectly capable of doing that, making it sound very nice, 'cause it is very nice.
Okay, perfect, yeah, 'cause I'm like, I-
I volunteer.
Do we have, do we have-
The Bell River corridor, the green belt.
Well, there we go.
That's just one aspect.
Yeah, I had it in, like, the future. We have a lot of features here, actually.
We do.
You have something, Miss Mann?
I'm a hermit guy, sorry.
Hey, Tom, are you?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr.?
So the DVW for sure has a groundwater, um, map on the water that goes up into the wells. So, you know, there we have it.
Alright.
So we can get that from Bart?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be interesting to include that.
Okay.
Um,
I understand we got so many raised bluebirds in Tyler too, so.
Supposed to be salmon and bluebird.
I've seen them.
The next one, this one isn't extremely hard. This one I just wanted to get everybody's take on it, but it's the Community Development Upland, so challenges and opportunities, goals, objectives, and strategies, and then the preliminary development sites. Um, and the last one is adopt and implementation, this is Section Ten. This is, you know, planning, coordination, review, public hearing, plan adoption, plan implementation, create initiatives, grants and capital improvement plan, recreation plan, transportation and infrastructure plan, and then zoning requirement adjustments. So, those are the last three sections that I need to-
Section Six, Ten, is it?
Six, Nine, and Ten.
And we still need photographs. Whatever ones we wish to include.
Well, and it's starting to get nice out, so even, I'd take a lot of walks.
Just another thing, we, we need raw material for that.
Right.
We gotta do an index page.
Index page is done.
Oh, is it? Okay, great. Table of contents? I remember doing that.
I think the index page is fully done. Resolution, acknowledgement. Yeah, table of contents is done.
Oh, okay, cool.
Um, okay, so we don't have the index, but we have table of contents. So, so what I can do, um, I mean, we can, I mean, we can include some minutes, or I can send out an email, and just kinda things that we need to put together, because this would be a lot easier if everybody can kinda think of, you know, if we all want-
Time to set up a Dropbox to accept photos. We asked for-
Right, if you, if you send, and Amber has access to the Dropbox also, so either way, if he has-
We get word out about that again.
Yeah, I put that out one time before on the Memphis page about getting photos and-
I do remember that.
You know, but if, uh, if anybody wants, I mean, like you said, Steve is, uh, down the Bell River, you know, pictures of the river and you know, whatever we can get.
Where was that section you re-ruined out of our master plan? We see it writing, there's some pictures.
Yeah, if you have pictures. I mean, I have an aerial shot of the city, of downtown, but it's kinda gritty, so that's why you might drone it. Yeah, if you wanna do, you can do a drone shot.
Oh, yeah, this is just a natural feature.
Oh, is that, is that in her plan?
No, this is, this, yeah, this is our manual.
Historic art.
So I have set up, this is what needs to be put in here.
Could you email me that?
Yeah.
For online?
Yeah, and this is all in the Dropbox, so that's what I can do. I can send everybody an email, and if we can all kinda just like tag-team it, pick out a couple of things, pick out a section that you wanna include something in, or even if it's just, um, just a couple ideas or facts or sentences, we can pull it together and-
Yeah, so what, yeah, so, and that's a good idea.
What would you try to look at?
Just-
Everybody has a copy of the, everybody has a copy that Amber made of, of the most updated plan, so.
Two, yeah, it's just draft two through ten.
You know, before the next meeting, and they, you know, go through it, pick a section, pick something in it, and-
You can't be, you can't, you can't, gotta quit being so vague about this stuff. I'm tired of getting an agenda that says review master plan.
Okay.
We need to have a list of stuff.
That's what she's setting up right now, she's giving on an email.
I know, but we've been doing this for months, review master plan, we still need this, we're almost done, you know. Steve says he can draft that whole thing, but why haven't, why haven't we done that thus far? If that's something we could have done.
Because we've been dealing with that, with the condo bill, that's why.
But, we can't just have review master plan on the agenda.
That's all I was asked to put on, that's all I put on until today, till we got everything set down. So we are working on the master plan. We're gonna continue to work on the master plan. It doesn't have to be done immediately. We have, we really don't have a time schedule. I mean, we're doing a master plan that's ten years old, so giving us a couple of months-
I don't, I don't care about ten years old and stuff. It just seems every time we come in and we talk about the master plan, it's a lot of talk.
We're coming up with ideas and what you remember.
And then the meeting is done, and, and nothing gets done.
What are these quotes for? Why are we getting quotes on what?
So, each-
Are they gonna write the Section Six, Nine, and Ten, or are they gonna take what we wrote and incorporate it?
So, I mean, I guess my overall idea, um, is I would like to have a draft going into this, and, and here's what essentially we want to say. I, I would like to see them maybe be able to format it better, or add some things that, that maybe I just don't know because they do this.
So, we want them to tweak what we incorporated?
Yeah, I want them to take our rough draft with essentially all the goals that we want in it.
Make them look.
Yeah.
It's probably three quarters of it we did do, but put it in a nice professional format to bind it. Send out notifications to all various branches of government.
Yeah.
All that stuff, they, that's, that's part of what we plan, plan to do.
There is a fair amount of, of verbiage that is, sounds.
Yeah, I'd say we got seventy-five percent of it completed. I think that's what Amber's saying, we could do the same thing, just, they're, they're getting paid by the hour, Barb, I mean, Karen quoted sixty dollars an hour. So every hour of work that we, in the huff of the airplane, we save the sixty bucks. And we're, we're saying what we wanna say about the city as people live in. That last master plan, I would've run as far away from Memphis as I possibly could, the way that all the verbiage was in there, it was horrible. Get your babies and run.
So.
This is terrible.
What I, what I can do is send out, send everybody an email on just, here's the section, section six, section nine, section ten, here's what each of these sections are supposed to say. So that's what I was reading off, like section nine is the community development plan. So here's what I, you know, here's what we know it needs to say.
So I understand where, what these people are gonna do for us.
Oh, right, right, right.
Unless somebody wants to take the initiative and type it all up for free.
Well, type is one thing, but putting it in a published format is an entirely another. You need a professional to do that unless you do that all the time. You know, I wanna hand somebody a master plan that's fit to your sixty pages who's maybe looking to invest in Memphis. And the first thing they see is some shabby thing with, you know, your, your, your marks are off, your photographs are blurred, it looks stupid. It's not a good first impression, maybe my professional.
This, this one, this, the one that I can print it off.
Yeah, that looks clean.
This looks clean, and I don't know, do you know who did this? Did you, did you do this?
Is this mine?
Yeah, that's yours.
Is it yours?
No, no, that one's not me.
Oh.
No, that's, um.
Come on, Kay, you could grab something.
That's, um, Mark Blazek.
Terry, yeah, Terry's helping us.
She only did like four pages of it, the rest of it was what he did.
Yeah, I mean.
She did a lot more than four pages, she collated a lot of the language she went through, she laid out rough drafts, she did a lot more than just four pages of it. And she never charged us to, by the way, some of those other goodness of her heart. She recognized that it should be handed off to a planner just so that we can get all the legal implications and have it professionally produced.
Correct.
I mean, yeah, cause this, this one looks pretty.
She wasn't grabbed her business, she's pretty good at that, like I said, she does some of the other stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the education or skill to be able to make it.
Well, nor should you, you're going, you're still lost.
That's why we need a professional, I mean, we can chicken scratch it on paper and review it and then type it up or whatever else and then send it to the professional planner with the, with the editing or the, or the, uh, what we want set in there.
Karen said it would probably be a lot less as she quoted, cause she did not realize that we had seventy-five percent of the.
Right. Right, well, and if, and if, I mean, if what it comes down to is, okay, here's exactly what we need and we just need somebody to make it pretty, I mean, that's going to be a, a tenth, or if, you know, probably even less than that of what.
Yeah, not a hard job to professional job to do.
Um, I just want this to look nice and I don't, I, I, I just don't have the skill to do it, so I don't know.
Me neither.
Alright, so everybody look it over.
I'll write that next environmental section, that's gonna be a lot to do this.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you right now, I just, I, uh, I think my most confident area would probably be, I could probably do the adopt and implementation, section ten. Um. So, I, I feel almost confident doing that section, but the, the community development plan and, uh, the natural resources or whatever, count me out, the natural resources.
Barb, Ken, anything on that?
Yeah, we should have a community development plan, I mean, that's what people would have ruled out, what? Businesses are gonna wanna look at, what is your community development plan?
I mean, that's a big one right there, especially if somebody wants to.
Destination.
Yeah, I just feel like that's such a loaded question.
Yeah.
It is.
There, there's so many answers to it that I'm like.
Yeah.
But again, I mean, this is kind of where.
Try to make it sound good though, you know, be truthful.
Yeah, but this is where it's important to look at other peoples, like I've looked at Richmond, I've looked at Bruce Township, uh, Riley, uh, Clay Township. I have them all downloaded, I should, I'll have to pull them all up, but I looked at quite a few to figure out like what, what they said. Some of them are very brief, like, community development plan to whatever, X, Y, and Z, and that's it. And then other ones are like very detailed, so.
Can you do it?
We can find somewhere, yeah, yeah, somewhere in the middle.
Right. Okay.
So that's really what I have been doing is just trying to read other peoples and get an idea, so we're not handing this completely off to somebody else and paying them to.
Yeah, yeah. To find some of the smaller communities, like, we're only a square mile, a lot of these communities are thirty-six square miles, you know.
Right.
It's a little bit of a.
It's a neat character, it really is.
Yeah, Royal Oaks is crazy.
Well, that's just it, we, I mean, if we, I would rather have something that we can look at when we, when we came in, before we came to the meeting, instead of coming to the meeting and then saying, well, this is what we gotta do, this is what we gotta do, this is what we gotta do, and then everybody leaves. Nothing is done in the next month and then we come back and it's the same thing.
Well, now we're on a different track.
Yeah, for what I, I printed it probably April, um, I, did you get a copy? Cause I don't think you were here at that meeting, I'll have, I'll have to make sure you get a copy of it. Um, because that's, that is essentially the same thing, I just, the only thing I have done now is made sure that what needs to be said is in those sections, or like what the idea of those sections are.
So is there a way to identify the sections that we still need to address? Go to other ones, print their sections and kind of, like, if, if we can sit here as a group and say, this is what they say, what, what, what should we say?
Right.
We should be right here at this moment though, because we overlooked that we should've gotten three bids for the planner.
Well, I don't care about.
So, well, I'm just saying, you know, be patient with us here. So the council asked, planning commission to get two more bids, we don't have them yet. We can still work on these other things and, and they're there.
Work on these other things.
You know, it's not like we're not trying to move forward with it.
Well.
We were right close to having someone hired and we hit the hurdle, well, you really do a properly, it's a ten thousand dollar bid, so, you know, we can't help that. And we, and we still don't have two bids. So, that's, I would say that's a priority there.
That's the whole secondary issue, I'm talking about working out what we can physically.
And, I, I said I'll rewrite a section, we brought up the other ones, I don't know. And I don't have a magic wand to just make it all appear, but it seems to me like everybody's stepping up and taking on responsibility and doing things.
Okay, so I'm looking at Riley's, uh, master plan, um, and there, this is just their section five, this is the goals and objectives, um, which, you know, I think that, that could work really well for our development, community development plan. And theirs is ten pages and theirs, theirs looks pretty nice and it kinda looks like they, um, included their policies, policy purpose, determining policy. They also inhabit here, oh, they do have their natural features, which is cool, which is, which would be part of like section six, so, although not every other community is set up the same way ours is. I mean, that's, that's gonna be a lot of the work is reviewing these, um, and pulling the pieces that we need from each of theirs. Cause it does take a lot of time.
You said you're gonna send out a section or an email with all the sections.
Yeah, I'll send out an email, let everybody, at least everybody see, okay, here's, here's what this section is going to say.
Yeah, that'd make it a lot easier for everybody to submit and, yeah, I like that.
I could sit at my kitchen table and look over things.
Yeah, and I mean, just even this, this is, this is ten pages, um, like I said, this is Riley's.
Are those in Dropbox? Did you put those in Dropbox?
No, this is a link, um, but I can also, I'll email this link.
Well, just email me the links and then I can, I can look them over myself.
Yeah, cause Riley's looks pretty good.
Yeah, I know theirs didn't take that long and it wasn't that expensive. Theirs is very small, mine is very small, don't you? Goodles, I think, is even smaller if you wanna touch a piece on them.
Yeah, yeah, theirs, I think was really small.
When you send out that email, can you also include how you have your final draft that you gave all of us labeled the Dropbox?
Yeah, that's my ad, um.
Wow, it might be in there, I don't know, I just.
I, so I have it, I'm not very good on Dropbox guys, but, um, where, if you, when you log into Dropbox, it'll say like starred. And, so right where starred is where, starred is where we have our, um, master plan and then it says like section four, and that's just because of their two PDFs. I couldn't, I couldn't add like my Word document obviously to the PDF.
Yeah, you couldn't merge them.
Yeah, so then under it says draft two to ten ADR, my initials that, I put all the other. So at least you can get on there and see that, I mean, it's there.
And everybody has a login for that, so if you don't, I'll write it down for you.
Yeah, that's a great reference, just to be able to pull up all those pages like of our current.
Everything is in, everything is in there, Amber did a lot of scanning, Ken did a lot of scanning when he was on the commission and getting all those, uh, all those documents and all those pages.
I just appreciate you setting that tool up, you know, that, even while we can sit here and look at the pictures.
Quite beneficial.
Yes, it is.
Alright, maybe instead of saying review master plan, maybe I should say discuss.
No, it's not just discuss master plan, we need to have.
We're getting there. I mean, we could also vote on the two thousand and fifteen one and just leave it at that. So, we're trying our best here.
As opposed to that then, I would be now.
Right, I mean, but we have that, we have that option.
Actually, it was two, twenty fifteen, I think, it started in twenty twelve.
So this is something that should've been started five years ago.
Fifteen years old.
And I've been, I've been only here for three years, so this master plan should've been done five years ago.
Could've been, they passed on it the last five year mark, but, you know, there wasn't a lot going on then.
So now we're, now we're, we got something going on now too, so it's a little bit slow.
Yeah, it didn't make sense this time.
Yeah.
To bypass it anymore.
No, it didn't make sense, so we're working on it. It's a little bit slow, but it's not something, it's not an overnight project. Tell me simply that's an overnight project, so, I'll sing that we're not working on it, I take offense to. Alright, moving on. Comments from commissioners, I think I've already said my bit.
I have, I just have a question, um, has nothing to do with any of this, but I've been asked by people when the roads are gonna be, when, um, Robert or Lois are gonna be paved.
Before winter.
I mean, that's, that would be with DPW.
Yeah.
September?
We got pushed back a little bit.
Yeah, people are asking.
We'll do it before the roads freeze, that's my pessimistic outlook.
They're, they're talking September now?
Yeah, start.
That's, is longer, so I have something to talk to you. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Riley?
No, sir.
Mr. Zambou?
Nothing.
Ms. Randanzo?
I wanna apologize, um, for spelling your name wrong, I'm so sorry, Mr. Riddle, I'm so sorry. I have two brains in my body, I've never been so dumb. My bad guys.
Mr. Weaver?
All good, uh, Memphis days, things are moving forward for the Lions, we put some music on out there. I had another meeting with, uh, grant people. Go through, we might get that parking lot paved, might get some additions on Lions Hall, uh, stage built, burn stage built, raw as part, not under the building, but off of the pavilion. So we're taking a big swing here, moving ahead.
Did the projector work for you guys over there at the Lions?
I haven't touched that yet.
Well, just give me a call, I'll help you set it up, not a big deal.
I will do that.
Alright, and our new member, Jamie Helsner, welcome.
Thanks.
Yes, welcome.
Uh, I got something.
Okay, awesome. Tammy, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I've, uh, but things are gonna be added, we know when they're gonna be putting out the agenda, it's the week before, so there's no reason why stuff can't get put into the agenda. I mean, we know when the meetings are gonna be held, so if you have stuff, I would rather see it on the agenda than to add stuff in. And then, I don't like reviewing stuff here and then having any discussion about it, like, you know, what was the purpose of, of bringing this in today?
To be proactive and educate the people.
But what's the purpose, what is your, what, like, you know, we have to have an end game, you're just throwing out information, information, information without any, you know, end game. You're not helping, you're not helping anything because you're just.
I, I disagree with you wholeheartedly.
You're just constantly just giving out information and information.
Do everything according to everybody's timeline, I can't make everybody happy. I got a lot of balls in here, I knew this was coming up, and by the time I saw that thing Friday get my board, so that's right, we have a meeting Wednesday. So I missed it by a day, but, I mean, is there any harm done here really?
No, because, because all the information that we get is just for information only. What does everybody do with all this for the information only?
Take it in, honey, learn.
So what is the end game of this though?
To take in the information.
Is it supposed to help us?
And discharge our duties as a planning.
I'm talking right now, is it to help us develop a sequence of events in order to do this? Okay, so then why don't we just, why don't we, why don't you just draft that up instead of constantly pressing out information, information, information?
Well, I like to think for other people, Tammy, I'm putting information out there, I'm sharing public information.
And all you're doing is muddling everything up, so.
That's your, in your opinion, you're entitled to.
Well, it is, everything you're involved in is right now muddled up because we don't have any, anything. We come in, we talk about the master plan, we're not really.
If we're in a roadblock, we're not moving ahead, then exercise your leadership and take us in a different direction. I guess that, that would be of the best.
I've been trying to, I'm saying, like, we need a list of things that we need for the master.
Draw one up. Lead.
Fine, I'll take it over because obviously.
Well, you still got equal members of council to deal with and for the commission, but lead.
Yeah.
Draw it up.
I am trying to lead, I'm trying to move us in a direction that we're, you know, to, to actually get something done.
I never claimed I'm the smartest one in the room.
All we keep doing is talking, talking, talking. You talk at every meeting.
So we'll see that next month?
We, we'll see something next month.
Okay, great. I'll have my environmental piece done and then, that's great, we're making progress.
I'd like to see something done. You talk a lot, but you don't get a lot of stuff done.
Well, I've spent a lot of hours writing on these plans, so I take that as an insult.